I call this meeting the order. I thank you folks for being here tonight. Appreciate it very much for starting for the holiday season. I would ask you, our county commissioner Greg, to order with you to have an invitation for you.
That's correct. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for another opportunity to discuss the business of the county. We just thank you for the abundant beauty that you've given this world and especially that's up here in Harris County. We thank you for the willingness of those that are on the dais to serve in an often thankful position, thankless position. We just pray that you give them wisdom and discernment tonight. We remember our military, especially those that are deployed away from home for the holidays. Just pray that you guide and protect them, that you be with our other first responders that protect us on a day-to-day basis. We thank you for this reason for the season, and in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. We have a special honor and privilege tonight for our pledge of allegiance and our fellow Commissioner Malville, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have some special guests tonight. We have Anthony Berger, who is the Scoutmaster for Harris County and a friend of mine that lives in my neighborhood, basically. And he's brought a number of his scouts here tonight to observe County Commissioner meeting, and they would like to help us begin the meeting by helping with the Pledge of Allegiance flag.
Would all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, boys. Having obtained the rank of legal scout, particularly having a spot in my heart for boy scouts, it's hard to remember that you were at your age, I can't remember that long ago. But I was actually starting on that journey. Certainly something has helped me and goodness did throughout the years, and I really cherish those years. Thank you, dear. All right, first item is the minutes from the regular session of November the 18th. And if you wish to put them together, the appeal, termination hearing of Lottie Ann Lee on that same date. Do I have a motion?
Chairman, I make the motion to approve both minutes, both subsequent.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, the other side, need discussion. All right, all in favor, please take a bow, raise your hand. Vince Pat, I just make an announcement, Ms. Tuning is not here tonight. She is in Athens, Georgia, at the Carl Biston Institute of Government, attending the newly-elected Commissioner's training program. She goes, started today and runs through Friday, so she will be with us at our next meeting. Parents of citizens, Nancy, anyone sign up other than diesel? All right, Scott Boy.
Scott Boy, fourteen, one two six, highway one sixteen, Pine Mountain, Georgia.
We have, I think I've already told you that the testing is going to be scheduled for next week ahead of order of the supplies. And our wonderful coverage is going to be provided by the newspaper. We've got the test as well. That will be an exciting event. The Chairman, myself, and Commissioner Tuning are supposed to meet the eighth at two o'clock to get her introduced, and then from there on, then we'll schedule a follow-on meeting for all of us to get together. I think we will see if her legal expertise brings a new level of comprehension.
I've been in touch with her.
To that, already?
Quite a bit lately, we've been talking, so.
And that's about all that I have to report.
Can you give me a day ahead of time when we're going to do the water test?
I'll make a note, too.
I need at least that, because I had to work with her.
Greg, is there any update at all on the possibility of that highway, about the DOT at all?
As far as them doing anything, no, they already basically said, no, we're not going to do it. So they said, well, they'll let us do it.
Well, I'm talking about the bridge, I'm sorry, the bridge on.
Bridge four. There's, I inquired as far as possibility of local legislations to have the state restrict trucks on that. District engineer said the only time he's heard of that happening is in Atlanta, where they require the trucks to go on the bypass, I guess, as opposed to in the city. So it can be done, but they've apparently already been talking to some folks from Harris County about the potential, the county taking that back over, taking that section over, restricting it, and they're open to that option, so it really depends on what direction they all decide to go. The sign should be up here, indicated very soon, as far as advice, and let folks know that's a difficult corner to make when you're riding a semi.
Okay.
Greg, is there, you remember our first water test? Have you ever got anybody to interpret it for you? I think that is a critical thing. It needs to be interpreted by a worthy person, so we'll know what it says. I mean, if you can't look at it and tell what it says, I can't, I mean.
I can make some implications from it, but it's nothing that you can, that anybody will accept in a court of law, so. Because of the difficulty, it's a non-point, non-point source, so you can't definitely, I mean, you can take, you can make some, say, okay, it's certainly a higher content in this particular area versus here, here, but can you prove the source? It's fairly apparent, but can you prove it? That's, I want the addition to that one.
I would think that after these tests next week, if they show something, yeah, possible, or even it's kind of iffy, it adds some evidence to it, then we can address all of it.
Well, and there's specific standards and guidelines for that, and there's standards set. There are no standards set for what we did. I mean, there, it doesn't mean that there's nothing, it says at this, it should be at this level, this should be at this level. All I can draw is, is an analogy of saying, okay, it's more concentrated in this area, but what does that really mean? There's nothing definitive as far as statuary or regulatory that says.
Well, I tell you what it means to me, I don't want it to be a problem.
I understand.
I mean, that's as simple, but, you know, I just feel like we need, because I would ask, and they wouldn't give an opinion because they didn't take tests, so they wouldn't really give an opinion. All they would say was, hey. So that's just an opinion. That's why I would say, I would love to know, what does it actually mean? And who can, it's got to show something, but what is this appear to you?
You would probably have to hire somebody that had expertise in that field, and testify as a legal expert or an expert witness in a court that really.
And that's only the one thing. I mean, I know we got other stuff. We got to have Nijerds, Simone's, all kinds of other stuff coming through there, too. I mean, you can look at the ground and tell it. Grass, grass is all that.
Still, Scott's coming from, at this point, we're not in a court of law, so we don't have to have that level of proof, but I think it'd still be helpful to have some type of interpretation, so at least we have some rough idea of what we're dealing with, even if we can't absolutely prove that all the bad stuff is coming from, from the chicken plant. I think it's going to be helpful to know what's in it, even though we may not know, may not have a single one contact, I think that's.
To further take it down the road, then we need to really start getting into things like doing some background studies, and, you know, be able to see what your baseline is, and figure out how far that exceeds the baseline, and you have to study quite a few points around there. And we have to find, you know, a scientific or an environmental firm that specializes in that kind of analysis, really, to go to that level.
I'm still mystified as to why the EPD won't do something, at least help us with testing. What did they do?
Have any of you, have y'all made an effort to contact the EPD?
Yes, I have.
I've talked to probably five different ones. I've got a good handle on why. There's a lot going on, and they don't want to even tell you, because there's something going on up there. And they won't say anything until it comes to a conclusion, is what I get. But I think we, why can't, you know, they want to be good neighbors? You know, they keep saying we want to be good neighbors, why? That should be enough right there. But when you go talk to them, it's like, do what we want to do. Because we're in compliance, but then you show, well, no, you're not in compliance. Well, we're just a little bit out on that one. Well, what's, what does a little bit mean? You're still out of compliance, so you're over your limit on that first thing we talked about, Charles got up for. And I brought that to his attention up there, and that's all he would say, well, we're just a little bit over. Well, that don't make it, you know, right? But, you know, I've just considered all the people in Pine Mountain Valley that have to listen to this thing and smell this thing, day in and day out. I mean, I go to sleep at night, when I finally get to sleep, with bang, bang, clang, and every other Noah's on the sun. Then over the weekends, you know, I told him this morning, people going to church Sunday, this is Sunday. It's failed, well, bad. And it's, someone's got to be done with it, you know, just, I think we need a quality of life, too, where we don't have, if you sit out yard at night, all you hear is a drone from that place up there, or the smell. There's just too many things wrong, and I just don't see why, you know, y'all going to be good neighbors, help us out with this.
How bad was it, Scott? What's the difference between when Cagles was there, because you were living there when Cagles was there? What's the difference?
I don't think it.
In the problems.
It's a whole, a whole lot worse than that. And I think it's because they're running two shifts, and then they run a cleanup shift, they're running around the clock. And as far as I know, Cagles only run one shift. And I might be wrong on that, but the Noah's was not there. The smell sometimes, but, you know, as far as the other stuff, I don't remember all the horns blowing, it's just, it's, I look at it this way, it's twice as big now, far as the product they're moving and the trucks coming, it's just a constant thing, it runs all the time. Because when Cagles had it, if you get a break on the weekends, you go home in the evenings, you're not listening to this thing running wild. I think that's the biggest part of it, it's just so big now. And just, can y'all imagine if they double up, like they were talking about? What happens then?
Do you think the source of the smell is the ponds?
If I, I can't get up there to sleep. I'd love to go up there, I'd love to go up there and let them take you on tour of that whole place. Then I could give you an opinion.
I probably wouldn't eat chicken anymore, so I'm not.
I don't think any of us would eat chicken anymore, I'll be honest with you. I quit eating it, pretty much. But, you know, with something that's ninety-seven percent of the chicken out there on the markets, got to eat a couple out? Ninety-seven percent of it's in the grocery stores? Yeah, that'd make a big thing. All they're going to tell you? Could be more. But far as, I couldn't tell you, Greg, really. You know, all I know is it varies from day to day, and it seems like the weekends now, and even when they're not running on the weekend, sometimes it's even worse then. But it all depends on, you know.
Well, the reason I ask about the ponds, because I was in the water and sewer business for several years, and, you know, our lift stations had odor problems, and we had found ways, you know, you, hydrogen peroxide injection to neutralize it. So if we know, if we knew specifically the source, then you're more likely to be able to find a solution.
But just for comparison, I talked to the EPD girl that I met up there the other day. I was talking to one, and the guy said, I'll send the girl out. I said, she's already been out here, it's nothing she's going to see, that she hasn't seen already. He said, send her anyway. I said, okay. And she called me when she got there. And we was looking, and I kept her there long enough, we was watching trucks and all this stuff, and all the plant just woke up then, all the managers come down there, and everybody, you know, asked what's going on, just looking. You know, asked if they could help, and she said, not at the moment, there are things. Okay. But I kept her there long enough, and finally one of those refrigerated trucks coming out of there was just spewing, poured out the back of it. And she's like, okay, I see what you're talking about. Now, this watch, it was drilling out real good, I seen it come out like garbage, many times. And that stuff is everywhere, it's on roads, it's in the parking lots, it's everywhere. So I've been trying my best, well, you know, I'm going to get to the right person, just want to be able to help with it.
Get your video camera?
Yeah, but I can't stay up there all the time. You know, and I've thought about that, I'm serious, I have thought about it, keeping one window because, but like he said, they can't do anything unless they see it. So we can stop them all day long if we see it, just like they do garbage trucks. There's spewing out the back of it going, he said, we'll get a garbage truck in a minute, because they're supposed to contain everything. And I think trailers should contain everything, too. But I'm just, I'm looking for some peace and quiet from this thing. And he told me, when they met, when they saw us down there, a morgue, he said, environmental man. I was asking about cardboard, he said, hopefully they add cardboard by the end of the month, as of November. So have you heard anything else on cardboard?
Nobody can check on that.
Okay. But I guess that's it.
Okay. Well, when we get the results from this water test, too, goes what we got, I mean, if it strengthens that.
That's what I'm hoping.
Then I think we can at least have something to move forward.
But I'm just hoping we can impress the good neighbor. You know, because I've met with all of them up there on different occasions, I've not been rude, nothing or anything to them, I've just expressed my opinion, and, you know, no threats, no nothing. It's just, you know, we need to do something about this, and y'all want to be good neighbors, good time to be good neighbors.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Next was Jerry Armstrong. Is Mr. Armstrong here?
Yes. Good evening, how are we up? Jerry Armstrong, fifteen thirty, my hand wrote Pine Mountain, Georgia. First off, I'd like to say, I'm not representing Georgia, I worked Georgia Power, I've worked on forty-three years now, but I'm not representing Georgia Power, I just represent Jerry Armstrong. I would like to ask y'all to adopt, decide if one put in their address or the county, this comes from Taylor County. I purchased this from Taylor County. When they incorporated the nine-one-one system in Taylor County, the county themselves went around and put these every, right at the, product line and driveway. And the material is, comes from Georgia Corrections. The, they come in, in the plates, they have a CAD machine that they, in Taylor County there, that they put the actual address on. The plates will come, if the number's larger, you can get plates from other sites. When I was talking with them, I asked them, would they sell me, you know, one? And I, they said yes, and I asked them, and in fact, I purchased three, one, one of each, one of my son's house, and this is for mine. And I asked them how much, and he said, ten dollars. Now, whether they were making profit on that, I don't know whether that was their actual cost, but that's, that's ten dollars. And I can tell you that it's not matter, middle of the night, it can be storming, you can, you can find where you're going. You have cases on the road where you have four mailboxes, you have four driveways, and the mailboxes all grouped together, where you got two driveways on this side of the road, two on this side. For emergency purposes, which driveway? And the numbers may be on mailbox, they may be that small, they may be big, but which driveway do you go down? So I'm asking if y'all would research this and consider splash money? The county, like I said, Taylor County did it themselves. Now, where the funding came from, I don't know, I don't know where the funding came from for that, but I do know they incorporated when they, the nine-one-one system.
So you're not, I was going to ask that question, did the county pay for that on the?
I understand that the county paid for them, for the, and also the county at that time installed it. And in talking to Taylor County, on the weeks that I've worked, the Butler area, he told me that Upton County is getting ready to do a couple of this, and they're using, they're, they plan on using some of the volunteer fiber parts to distribute them and install them. Now, what I understood is the county themselves, the county workers installed ones in Taylor County. And there are some other counties, a slight county has numbers like this, and like I say, you can just, you can find stuff. It would be a great, I think it would be a positive move for every, it would affect every ecosystem in this county, it would be a positive.
You got a question?
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a comment on it, to maybe help you out a little bit. Back in nineteen ninety-nine, October nineteen ninety-nine, we had an ordinance that was brought before the commissioners to do the very thing that Mr. Armstrong was talking about. And it was adopted in an ordinance, and the way the ordinance was reasonably written was required, it was mandatory, and it required reflective numbers, but there was some sentiment on the, on the commission at that point in time not to do it. In fact, one commissioner made the observation, which I thought was kind of one I never had dealt before, had heard before, that everyone has a constitutional right not to be found.
Yes, that's true.
And what? I don't know.
Where is that in the conversation?
I don't know. He had, he had the opinion that, he so expressed it, and there were some others on the commission that evidently concurred with that, because they went back and changed the ordinance from one mandatory to one that's voluntary. And if you look at the ordinance that was, that was adopted at that time, it says that these things are encouraged, as opposed to required. The, and it says that the compliance of the regulations is voluntary, and no action can be taken to enforce the ordinance against any residents who don't adhere to it, assuming that being those that don't want to be found. But the ordinance was, dated October the fifth, ninety-nine, and it was, there was also a restriction put in it that was to remain enforced for one year. And then it would automatically expire unless it was sooner extended by other action of the commission. I do not remember in the fifteen years I've been representing this commission that the commission came back to extend that or to dispute the fact that one has a constitutional right not to be found.
That was going to be my next question, was that paragraph, section three, paragraph C says, just what you said, that it shall be remaining enforced for one year.
So it's no longer, it was voluntary anyway, so, I mean, it was basically, but the idea then was, and the reason we brought it, was that nine-one-one and EMT people were having trouble finding people that were dispatching ambulance or dispatch the sheriff's department, you know, and you get out, you, you know, go up and down the road and you're trying to find, locate a piece, a piece of property that, where somebody is, you know, a crime had been committed, or they need EMT people, or whatever, if you can't find it, you know, then we can't do anything for them, so.
So, I want to.
That is, that is the issue that took before you, as to whether you have, anybody has a constitutional right not to be found.
So if we didn't, if we just.
Yeah.
If we decided to do anything, it would be, we would have to create.
Yeah, you could take this ordinance and.
Right, and use it as, but here is not one, all the books name.
No, no. You know, I think when you go over and get a building permit for a house, then, then the community development assigns you a house number.
But they don't mandate that.
But there's no requirement that you put that house number up, and particularly not that you're going to put one on a sign, you know, that's reflective, that can be located as high as, you know, whatever. But this ordinance was, you know, as I said, was mandatory, and then for that purpose of locating them, and then, then it was changed to voluntary, so that's what your issue is.
And since I supervise EMS and nine-one-one, I'm strongly in favor of, and not necessarily, because there's some subdivisions that have very good number, you know, and it's consistent, and that's fine, but there needs to be some standard that says you're going to have a, you know, it's going to be visible, it's going to be at least a certain size, and, you know, so, because, you know, there's that critical time of getting to some of these patients, especially from a medicine standpoint, and fire, to a lesser extent, maybe law enforcement, depending on the circumstances, but it is tough trying to find houses around this county sometimes, when you're, especially when you're out in the country, and it's, it's just not good for our folks that are out there responding, and that's why I speak in for those departments that I speak about.
So I was telling you, you had referenced the Taylor County, this is applied to the incorporated areas of.
Yes, sir. Yes. The city of Butler and Reynolds, anywhere in Taylor County you go, it's not. And if it's two residents, you use one driveway, it'd be, both numbers would be sitting there.
Mr. Taylor, we are authorized to borrow.
I think probably we could not require Pine Mountain or have them to do it. I think we could, we could work in conjunction with them, let them, you know, adopt a similar ordinance that would be required, require them to do it within the corporate limits of the city. Your jurisdiction usually runs in the unincorporated areas of the county, and that's probably where they're coming from, is to say they work together to make it work.
I've had several conversations with Jerry about this, and I've knocked on a lot of doors this summer. And probably somewhere in quarter of the people have no sub, no identification. The majority of them have it on one side rather than both sides, and in some areas, probably half the people have no identification. I can't really envision anyone would be that negligent, because it's their own life. However, it also, in most areas, it is required in commercial buildings, and what I have seen in this area is very few commercial buildings have numbers on them, just in general. And I think at least we should do it for new, all new construction, and put it in, put a, have them put it up and put it in with the, as part of the building permit.
What drawback we do?
In this, in our area, except for Shiloh, basically, building permits, they follow the requirements, the cities follow the requirements of the county's foreign building permits.
One drawback we do have, we don't have a sign shop, so we could not do these in-house, but if we decided to go this route, I know, and one county I did, it was the fire department that handled the situation, the road department did print the signs, but then they made available, made them available and sold them through the fire department. The expenditure would not be horrendous to be able to get a lettering machine to do some of that, and some of that actually might save us some money to be able to do elsewhere in the county, so we would have to make the move to get the, to die cutter to be able to do the sign materials.
All the material here, the post, the reflective, the blue reflective, is available through Georgia Corrections.
Understood that, it's just we don't have, we don't have the capability of doing the die cut letters.
Yeah.
We already buy the signs from the prison, like that, so it would be, it would be just a step of being able to print out the numbers on an individual basis.
Yeah.
And you can make it available to. And you can make it available to volunteer fire department, or you can make it available through our planning and zoning department someplace that was central and get a handle on it. And then, we'll get your mission to...
All right, do you have a comment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make the suggestion that we go forward and look at this further?
I'll, I'll look into what it costs to get the sign stuff. Mr. Chairman? Can I request that we move the item eight up to the old now because we have the councilman from Shiloh here, and I believe he needs to get to his meeting across town. Do you allow that, sir?
Yes.
I'll let him address the request. What it is, is basically they've requested that we potentially service their four vehicles. I'll let him make his presentation.
Well, I'm Billy McDaniel, I'm from Two Spring Street in Shiloh. One thing before I start, on the last subject, it was a fellow, I used to be a mail carrier. And this bullheaded fellow told me, said, "I know my number, you know my number, you put my mail in your box and my box, everything will be happy." And he had a slight heart attack one night. And as soon as he came back from the hospital, he had three inch letters on both sides of his mailbox. We are, I think, the letter, does everybody have a copy of the letter? That explains, I was just coming out, asking you questions if you had anything else. I was thinking, you know, when we was negotiating splash tax and loss tax, that, you know, we was all talking about a better cooperation between county and cities, or the city and the county. I just feel like we've, we've been doing that, y'all have been doing that. And we appreciate that y'all can do this for us.
Billy, how are you maintaining your vehicles at this point? Who's doing that?
Well, we hired out to different stations. And a while back, we came up with some bad advice and some bad work. And we wanted an independent person to look at, so we came out, Mr. Don out of the county camp, was he over there? You know, managing the vehicle. And he looked at it, and he, you know, got a wrong deal on us. And so, it got me thinking, we'd be better off if we had somebody that wasn't quite as profit minded as, you know, yeah, you need four new tires and a light load, you know, and all we needed was a light load. So, we think we'd better get a better deal from the county and... Appreciate it. And those times when I was out, you see I'm checking that car, it did look like the head cleaning room to work on it. Wasn't backed up, and we wouldn't wanna jump ahead of any county.
We wouldn't let you.
Well, that, Greg, I, I don't know, what are your comments?
Well, of course, our, our first thought is, you know, it's against the president, it's Pine Mountain and Hamilton and Beverly Hall. And I wanna be knocking on the door as well. And any discussion, we've said that we would definitely have to have our vehicles have precedence and would have to be on a space available basis. Things like oil changes and tire changes and things like that, we could fairly easily work in. But if they had a major issue with a police car or something like that, we may or may not be able to get it right away because we have to make sure that our ambulances and our sheriff's vehicles at least are, are take priority. So, those considerations have to be made and understood. Probably the biggest issue, and they seem to be okay with that. Biggest caution we have is, you know, is Pine Mountain gonna be here? All of your fire departments are all gonna be knocking on our door. We already take care of some of those vehicles that we own. So, it's just, how, how wide are you gonna open the door? You know, could we, or it would certainly help to bring in a little extra revenue when their times are down. But we do have limited capacity, and we don't wanna overstretch that. I don't think this would be an overstretch for only four vehicles, as long as, like I said, we did it on a space available basis. Again, it's opening the door. And y'all set policy, and you can decide whether we open the door or deadbolt it.
If we were to do this, this with fire, and intergovernmental agreement?
Yes, I think that would be a good idea.
I think we'd probably address greatest concerns in such an degree. Have it for maybe a year, and then renewable year by year, as long as it was working out. Wouldn't have to continue it.
For either side.
For either side.
I think we have some shit some about, like, no speeding tickets in Shiloh either, bro.
That's a good deal.
Just, there's discussion and consensus, do we wanna at least go ahead and explore this possibility and look at the other possible ramifications of it before, before we take a vote on it, say yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's okay with the commission, though, they do need a set of tires for the police vehicles that we do have set in stock. We'll do that at, but we're gonna charge them whatever the going rate of labor is and whatever shop supplies is that's amenable. Because I know that police chief was in the bus the other day, he didn't beg, but he didn't threaten me either.
It's amenable to me, but it's amenable to me. Okay, all right. Yeah, let's, let's do that. We can look forward, we'll take care of that, set of tires.
All right.
Thank you, Bill.
I truly appreciate it. Appreciate y'all doing that.
Yes, sir.
I'll get back over there and catch up to some of the late, one hour.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, next item is the whole business AWAS system for the airport. Greg?
Um, I think I've addressed the concerns of the attorney, that if we go ahead and we buy it through the state, through the state contract, we'll give them the P.O. and the paper through them, then all the state contract requirements are in place. The million dollar liability, insurance policy, the Georgia laws will prevail. I think that...
Jurisdiction venue, venue will be in Truco, be in the state of Georgia. So, you know, I think that would eliminate the issues that I had with jurisdiction venue.
And then, now the, the bottom line comes down to is, can we get reimbursement? And there's two, two ways of doing that. We have to do a cost benefit study now to at least do a one-to-one benefit, which I, they gave us twelve pages of paperwork to do to, to do that study, to meet, see if it meets FAA funding standards. And if we don't cut them us from there, then the state could possibly look at a funding, a joint funding in twenty sixteen would be paying us back essentially. So, we're gonna try those two aspects. And of course, of course, we eventually can refund it out of squats if we have additional money. But we're gonna try and get either federal or state funding for it. Bill is here, he can comment on any of those issues if he wants, his, you know, consulting out of county expertise.
That's correct, yeah. Basically, now obviously, the FAA funding, ninety percent to five percent state match is most attractive. So, you pursue that first. The cost benefit thing is a new wrinkle that they've just added in the last month or so. So, you'll pursue that, I think you'll be okay with that. If not, the fallback's seventy-five percent state funding. So, it's a, it's a great tool for the airport, and that gives you kind of a pennies on the dollar investment.
But, but the one drawback is, is that federal money does come up our taxiway money. But basically, you can go ahead and do the taxiway, and they would still owe you that money for how many years? Then eventually, once you got the taxiway done, you can go ahead and draw down that additional money and pay you back then, which is, you know, kind of far out when you start figuring present value and those kind of dollars. But nevertheless, the money is out there in the future. So, those are the various potential paybacks for us. But there's also some annual maintenance and operating costs. Do you know how much some of the FAA annual maintenance costs is?
It's very small typically, it ends up being quarterly, and you run, it can run you a few thousand dollars a year max. If you have some small part replacement, that budget comes down for it, I believe.
Bill, taking, in your opinion, with an AWAS system in there, what would it do for our traffic?
For our total traffic increase, I would say probably fifty percent.
So, chance...
On high form, bad weather, excellent weather, they have to have a, a recorded weather before they leave at the destination. And they can't file into a place without, even though if they get there, they might kind of break off and go and shoot their approach, whether they can make it or not, just to go down and take a look. But insurance purposes and such as that, it really puts a lot of pressure now on the corporates. They, they really want a little bit tighter line than what some of the others do.
So, with, if it increases traffic substantially, that's more gasoline sales and more profit?
That's right. Now, it won't, it won't just, you know, it won't open the door and fall out. It's gonna take time to get around here.
All right. I would entertain a motion as to whether we move ahead to authorize expenditure for the purchase installation in the first year's maintenance. So, a motion to approve, I have a second. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Okay, then moving into our new business, the financial statement for October of this year. It was divided a couple of weeks ago. Entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have some questions that I think they can answer, so I will make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion to approve, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Okay, any other new business? We will move into the county manager's portion. First item is the airport capital improvement plan for the next five years, which is something we do each year. At this time, it does not bind us to anything, we can certainly change it from year to year. But it does have in there what is planned for the, tentatively planned for the years two thousand sixteen through two thousand and twenty, along with the, the costs associated with each of those things. This for citizens' verification. In two thousand sixteen will be the taxiway relocation, which is a required federal thing that we have to do. And the environmental assessment for runway extension. Two thousand seventeen is the runway extension and the runway edge light placement. Two thousand eighteen is in addition, another ten unit tee hanger, the site prep and the paving, and then the construction of that unit. Two thousand nineteen is the dew hanger area site prep. Two thousand twenty is security improvements for fencing. Now, the total cost of all of those five years worth of plans is about five point four million dollars. The federal government will pay about four point eight five billion of that. The state will pay about two hundred and seventy thousand of that, and the county will pay two hundred and seventy thousand dollars over the five years for five point four billion in improvement. We do have with us our airport consultant, W.K. Dixon, Phil Everly, and Becky Hoban. I'll turn it over to you.
As Harry said, in the holiday tradition of Thanksgiving, Christmas, in the FAA five-year capital improvement plan, all public use airports in the United States are required to turn in December thirty-first this five-year capital improvement plan. So, it's a document we can do every year. As Harry said, you're not obligated to do any of the projects on it. It is their way of gathering data about funding requests across the country, helps them make decisions about prioritizing projects. The main project on here in the first year is your taxiway project. That's a runway taxiway separation criteria that, when it was built, it was fine years ago. They've changed that criteria now, so the taxiway has to be in order to meet this current safety criteria. So, that's FAA's priority.
Do we have any idea when that's actually gonna be?
What they're gonna do now is break it into pieces, basically, is the idea likely.
Because I've been talking about this, I don't know for years.
Mm-hmm, and so you're waiting for them to find that you've been promised funding. But they will not, they will not waver from that focus on that as a priority. So, that's like one of the AWAS, although that, that drives some safety elements. This is essentially also considered a safety criteria by FAA. So, that's why they will continue to put their resources and focus on that. As you do other things like the hanger project, entrance roads, splash money and other elements, their money is gonna continue to focus on this, focus on this until it's done. The other item on here, when you look at the format for this document, which is an FAA format, as you'll notice at the top, December fourteenth, and you'll notice the first year on there is two thousand sixteen, because the document represents a request for the next federal and state fiscal year. So, December fourteen, you're requesting funds for October first of fifteen, which is actually sixteen. So, there's seemingly an invisible year in there. In that time, you'll leave some design elements with that taxiway and the AWAS side of that. Again, as Harry said, this is a document you have to turn in December thirty-first of each year. You can change this every month if you'd like to. Again, it's just a wish list, you're not committed to anything on here. We assist with this process in addition to this document. For projects in the first year, there are applications, there's narratives, there's engineer's estimates, there's environmental documents. This year, the state is introducing an electronic entry of all this information. We do all that every year for you, so we'll take care of that again, and we'll look right at it. But this is just kind of a, it's a check-in every year, you turn in December thirty-first. Something changes in your desires or priorities, then we can alter it.
All right, and to answer Becky's question, when are we gonna start this first section of the taxiway?
You turned in the, the design for that taxiway, and it took almost two years to get comments back. And you just got those approximately... A month ago. A month ago. Those were, those comments were, they quickly turned back, and then you, we're expecting some feedback from that in mid-November. And, and right now, we're, we're still waiting on that feedback. So, you're going at the, you're, you're going as, at the...
You're going at the pace.
You're going at the, and you're in, you're doing the part that you need to be doing. So, what's likely to happen now, we actually have teed up the, if they'd like to break it in pieces. For example, from the terminal, if you're at the terminal looking out to the runway, to the left or east side, that segment that goes to that runway, it would be a nice break off, very clean project to do with the stand alone and come back and do the other, they may do that. You're teed up to do whatever option they give you, move forward with it, you're ready to do it. Good.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Just, just to let you all know, I did get old Camaras, and her mother had to go to the hospital, she had an emergency, so that's why she hasn't gotten back to us. She did get my questions answered on the AWAS today, but that was, that didn't spin.
And you'll be ready, you'll be, you'll be pushing and providing things, I have a taste of that.
All right, we need a motion to adopt this five-year plan. So, move. A motion to approve, in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
And you've got some documents for your son.
Yes, I'm not, if you want. Yeah.
Have you guys been out to the airport today?
I've not been out.
Had erosion on the zero-nine end of that new pad. Back. Okay, we'll take a look at that. Also, in this, in this breakout project, it would address the things we do for inspection.
All right, next item is Greg, the direct services.
These are the folks that provide, the senior center, we provide them with the building, and then they provide services. And they outline in their letter what services they provide. I guess some of their funding has been cut, so they've come to us to ask for an additional $1,500 in funding. We currently fund them at $6,500, and they've requested to go up to $8,000. Really a discretionary, all in hard condition.
I have a question. Who was this written to and when? You received it, yeah. I mean, there's no date on it, except for the facts, Greg.
I got it.
Originally, a bill came in with this amount. And Christie, our accounting tech, asked for explanation, and this is what we got.
Okay, so that was what her request was.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you want to defer and have someone represented here to discuss it, and maybe learn a little bit more about the program, because I think it's shrouded in a bit of mysteries, since we don't actually do it. We can bring them back at the next meeting if you would rather do that.
I would actually have to be tabled. I've had a conversation, I, we, we made visit there several years ago, and several of these things are additional. We identified that. Which I'd like to know a little bit more.
Okay, so, do you want me to schedule for a presentation at the next meeting? Because he said in my, in his letter that he would be willing to come back to us, so.
Please.
Okay.
How long have we been funding that, that, $6,500?
Several years, I believe.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure how long it has been, several years, I just, I don't have a specific number for it.
Could you, could you have that on the people? Maybe it would be helpful to know how long it's been.
Okay. All right, so this table, and we'll get a presentation from them.
I think it'd be good to have a presentation anyhow, because they haven't talked to, haven't talked to us since either.
Yeah.
Other than me going up to the center and see what's going on.
Next item is Ellisland Park proposal from Lutet Associates, Greg.
Yes, sir, Eric Lutet is a well-respected landscape architect, designer. Took him to the, the park originally, and he gave us the scope of services, I think to the tune of $45,000, I think. Was he wanting to design the whole park, and we said, not really what we wanted. First step we want is to go through an inventory, look at what would be the value of the timber, what would you recommend as a thinning cut, and what would the value of that be? Retain, you know, identify which would be commercially harvested, what should be preserved as specimen trees. And give us some general recommendations for the property. He came out and the parameters that he was given were in the letter. And what they proposed is coming back with, really telling us a little, a whole lot more about the park than we already know. Because we, we don't have anybody go through and identify, you know, what kind of species we have, any other issues that we have with the property. One reason I would like to have that species identification, especially as the scouts left, but as an Eagle Scout project, hopefully, we'll have Eagle Scout projects for a long time at that park as far as building benches, building benches, going out and doing plant identification, and this will help with that as well. But we really need somebody that knows what we're doing to get out there and give us the direction we need. I did take Mike Harris from the salt mill out there previously, and he estimated doing a thinning cut, probably the value of about $5,000 to $6,000 per acre. And then you back out the lake out of there, so reasonably to expect if he was, if he was on target, somewhere around $50,000 return on this investment, which would then give us about $40,000 left to spend over the park.
The funding for this would come from?
From the sale of the Ridgwood property. Then we would pay ourselves back from the timber.
Right.
What's the balance of that account, just what?
We haven't spent a whole lot, I'm trying to remember how much we spent on the engineering. I know we did $7,500, I think, for the topographic survey. We still should be at least $300,000, I would think. But I can get a balance on that, please. Of course, we also have SLOSS funds dedicated that can be used for some things in that park. But hopefully, the majority of the lion's share will be funded out of the sale of the Ridgway property. We still have to, as soon as John's feeling a little bit better, I'm going to get him out on the school board property, because I think they have funded and locked that at there. Someone by the day or other, couldn't tell the truth.
Chairman, I would move to be accept the proposal.
All right, a motion to accept, we have a second. I'll stop this discussion. This is just the first phase of the program, correct?
Well, this will give us an identification and cutting plan that we go in and get timber. And the big, there's, the big reason to get timber is not necessarily the, the funds that we're going to generate, but this property has not been managed at all from a forestry aspect for at least probably 50 years. And it needs some proper management. But you also need for, you know, we're wanting this to be a safe environment. And right now, for security purposes, you don't have line of sight where it would be very easy for folks to hide out where they shouldn't be hiding out and present a less than safe environment. Of course, it wouldn't be Harris County residents that come from the south or from Alabama, of course, but-
Constitution of right not to be found.
Yeah, that's it. But just, you know, that was one thing, pointing to Gary, may just look at the property, says, you know, you can still do, you can still have, keep a canopy and still have a line of sight. So, both, that accomplishes the two things you want to accomplish there.
One, one concern I have, I was going to ask you. You know, typically, when you log property, when they're through, it looks horrible. Granted, we're going to thin this, which makes it even more difficult. But you're going to have some damage, collateral damage. Maybe that's part of the proposals that we get further down the road. When you thin it, what do you do with the stumps, and that kind of stuff?
Because I don't- Stumps can be, I, I don't think we, I don't think we would grub them. I think if we, if we did any, any of thing, we'd probably grind them. I think a lot of them, because of the nature of the park, we would probably just leave, kind of cut it low and leave, and just let them, nature take its course, rather than trying to get any heavy equipment in there or do anything, unless it's, unless it's right in the line for, you know, picnic area or a trail. For the most part, I anticipate letting nature take its course.
I, I was, I have the same concern, I contacted the forester today, that does some work for me. And his suggestion was that, once you get to the place where you talk to your forestry consultant, that'd be his job to be sure that it is done correctly.
And that's what we are.
Yeah, that, you know, the lumber, the timbers moved, that none of the trails are destroyed, and all this, you know, canopy, the, you know, is very important. You break branches, but evidently, you can't, you can't, you can't hurt the bark, you could better kill the tree, and this type of thing. And there are contracts in the Georgia Forestry Commission, but those tend to be very loose, you know, more for foresters than for the owner. And so, you should, you should increase the language or, you know, truth.
And that's why we're working with these consultants, because we just feel like we need that expertise.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to award this contract an amount of $7,650? Please say if I raise my hand. Anything else, Greg?
Yes, sir.
All right, Terry, South Porter Road.
Yes, sir, I have three items, one is South Porter Road. South Porter Road is a prescription road, means you have no deeds to it, that runs approximately 1.2 miles, that starts at Mountain, Oak Mountain Road, and then runs to a dead end toward the east. And there, and there's no other road that it attaches to. But it, the county has maintained this road so, at least since 1993, and probably before that. So, you have this road by prescription, which means it's a public road, but you have, you acquired the, the title to that road based upon your use of the road. There's a 76-acre tract that's going to be subdivided at the end of South Porter Road, on the east end of it, where the last three, property on the three, the last property is. It's going to be divided into three tracks, one 10-acre track, one, two 10-acre tracks, and one 14-acre track. And as a condition of that, that, and then, like I said, this is a gravel road. The, the people that are, have purchased this are willing to and have provided a plat, current plat that will convey by deed 1.5 acres of this Porter Road. And what it will do is increase this end of Porter Road from the current supposed 15 feet up to the required 60 feet of right-of-way. So that from that end, and then if you ever come in and acquire the rest of it by deed to pave that road, then you have got a head start on it. So, I would recommend that you accept this, this transfer of this property, or approve the, the transfer of the, and deliverance of the, of the deed, which will convey 1.5 acres upon the deed that was signed and property witnessed and notarized.
How many houses are on that route now?
That I do not know. This, I, I think that it looks like they're between, just counting the parcels on the tax map, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, maybe eight parcels, nine parcels. I don't know whether all of them are houses, or whether it's just undeveloped, undeveloped property. But this, this piece is at the very end of, of the road. There's an old railroad bed that runs through there, and it doesn't even, it doesn't even connect with the old railroad bed. But it's the very end of the, end of the road. So that if any houses are developed in there off of these three parcels, at least that, that portion of the road is going to meet county standards. So that, and what you've tried to do in the past is, any, any paving that you do, you usually require that until you have feet titled, I mean, the deed is titled to the property.
Can you know if there's water, or are they going to do well?
I, that I don't know.
And we don't have anything that requires a paved road?
No.
To do a new, new development.
So, I recommend you go ahead and accept the transfer of the title to this, at least you have 60-foot right-of-way at the end of the road, and then, you know, it's better than, and then the rest of it is, is you have title by prescription. I, you know, if it were, if you didn't have the, the front end of the road, the old, old Mountain Road back was not already a, a scripted, you only by prescription, I would certainly not recommend you accept this. Because what they don't do, can do, is accept a road that, you know, has easements on other ends. That'd be connected to another public road. This is a public road that's connected to another public road. Just widening your right-of-way and improving your title.
Oak Mountain's gravel?
Yes, yes. According to the, according to the, the, the road list, it is, is, is gravel.
There would be some work out there a few years ago.
This came up as a result of the person who owns the property wanting to subdivide it into more lots. It went before the planning commission, and they denied it based on the possibility of increased traffic on a substandard road. So, he went back to drawing board and came up with the three lots, with the condition of don't give the county 60-foot right-of-way.
Is it now a substandard road?
It's, it's just a 15-foot wide road.
Mostly, all your, your roads, old road orders require a 60-foot right-of-way. And this is, of course, just a road, it's been out there forever, and, you know, it is as wide as it is. It might be 25 feet, depending on how much, how, how wide they've, they've graded them over the years.
So, this, this will only give us 60-foot right-of-way toward the end of the road, right before the whole road.
No, no, just for the end of the road.
Probably yes.
And then we're, you know, going across these three, in front of these three tracks, the, the right-of-way would be 60 feet in width.
So, the rest of it is right-of-way is by prescription?
Yes. It's a public road, it's just, it's by prescription, by use, by the fact you've maintained it all over the years. This end of it is, is the same way. But while they're subdividing it, we told them that, yes, you know, you can subdivide there, or they came back with a plan, and they said they'll, you know, give this, deed this right-of-way to the county, 1.5 acres. And this property lies underneath the saddle, so it will be up to the centerline of the road.
All right, a motion?
I'll make a motion, then we accept it.
A motion to accept, we have a second. I'll second it, just for some more discussion. I, I just, I'm concerned that we're creating problems for now, for the future. Since Oak Mountain is not, is, or is a gravel road, there's no way we're going to have, have a paved road coming off gravel road at the end of it. We've got right-of-way issues in the future for the balance of the road, however long that is. What happens if, if these folks tree at the end, all of a sudden, they, they decide that they want a non-substandard road? Once you get past-
Comes, it all comes back to you.
And if the other, other property owners don't want to convey that 60-foot right-of-way?
Then you have choice to either just-
And we have to condemn it?
You have to condemn it, and/or just say no thank you. I mean, that's a situation that I is, you know, exists other places in the county.
Will you pick a part, go ahead and pay?
Yeah, that would make, you know, I, I just, to my, my gut feeling, that would make a whole lot of sense, you know, because-
I don't think we would.
You know, a, a road that's, you know, 700, 800 feet long, you know, you got in the middle of nowhere.
Certainly, when we get around the pavement, Oak Mountain Road, then we can pick up the little roads that attach to it. Okay, so what this really does is it gives us the right-of-way in the event we decide to do something.
Give you the right-of-way.
That's all we're doing, we're, we're accepting the road. All the road?
No.
Just that bottom, that last part of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're accepting it, no cross of the county.
No cross.
We will have to still continue- We will have to still continue maintaining as we do now. So it should be no additional cost other than the road may be wider.
Yeah, that's on the cost.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to accept quitclaim deed for the last portion of South Porter Road? Please see if I raise again. opposed. Alright. Uh, next one, bond va, bond validation update for Copec and Grove, John?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, as you recall, you, there are two bond issues. One is a, an issue for Copec, which is a Kia supplier that's located in the northwest hash business park. Uh, there is a, they completed their plant, I think they've already started manufacturing there. And what you'll be doing will be issuing bonds or what are deemed to be phantom bonds. And they will benefit from those, those bonds with a, with a reduction in the amount of their taxes, I think, for a period of seven years. First three years, I believe, is at a hundred percent. And then the rest of the other four years is at fifty percent, as I recall. But this is very similar to most of, to the other bond issues that you've issued there. I filed a bond petition yesterday, you know, and it was, of course, approved by the development authority. I filed it yesterday. The hearing has to be to validate and issue the bonds. There has to be a validation hearing, you know, within twenty days of the date of filing. There has to be a newspaper notice published twice within those twenty days. And I have arranged for it to be published in the Hash County Journal this Thursday, the fourth, to be published to the eleventh. And then, then the bond validation hearing will be at nine thirty on Thursday, December the eighteenth. And assuming those bond, that validation is, order is granted, then we anticipate closing the transaction on December the nineteenth. Copec, there'd be no money, this comes out of the county or the development authority. This is, like I said, a phantom issue. Copec will be buying its own bonds and then paying its own bonds back. So it's, they just take money out of one pocket and put it in another. They have built the building themselves and it's at no cost to you at the end of the transaction. However, seven years is an option for them to purchase this property at, I think, a hundred dollars for the total. Thirty acres, I think it is. So in essence, the back doorway saying that is that you provided them, the development authority provided them some free land in which to locate their, their plant. And they will, like, they are operating as, as of now. The bond validation will be effective with, the reason we need to close it now is that, that it will be effective in two thousand and fifteen. And then that's from the first year of the bond validation, probably the first year of the tax payment. The second issue, the second one is the one for the Grove that the public improvements authority is issuing for five point three million, I think it is. The, and is to build the sewer line from Muscova County line to the Mulberry Grove property, which is will be developed by the, the Bradley and Woodruff entities. It's a mixed use development. You've approved this back in, I think it was two thousand and six initially. And because of the downturn in the economy and some other, other issues, it, it is now to the point where we're ready to, ready to go. They have acquired all their easements on the west side of the interstate of one eighty-five. And they'll come under the interstate to serve this, this property. Now, this, I think at the last meeting, you approved the contract for the sewer. You will own the sewer line and it will be a public sewer. You will charge sewer rates and, but this and the, the purchase, the, the developers are responsible for paying the, the, all the bonds back. And you are going to create a special use tax district so that if it falls, falls short, then you can, you can tax this property as, in order to pay the, pay the bonds back. It is on the same schedule as the Copec. I filed it yesterday with, there'll be a hearing, publication the fourth and the eleventh. And the bond validation hearing will also be set for the six, the eighteenth at nine thirty here now in front of just here. There's no action to be taken on that because this has been approved by the public improvements authority for the Grove and also for the Harris County Development Authority for, for Copec. Now, third item deals with a sewer ordinance. As a part of the Grove transaction, you're going to be delivering, because you do not have a sewer treatment plant. You have to make some arrangements on what to do with that sewer, the sewage that comes off this public use development. And because the sewer line will be running from Mulberry Grove down to the Harris, to the Muscova County line and the Hash County, the Columbus Water Works will then take the, the discharges coming down that line and take it to this sewage treatment plant and undertake the obligation to, to purify and dispose of the sewage that's coming down the line. As, as a part of that transaction, you've had, you entered into an agreement, intergovernmental agreement with Columbus Water Works. And part of that agreement requires you to adopt a sewer ordinance that is substantially the same as that of the Columbus Water Works. Meaning so that you can't push anything down your, your sewer line that they, they would not otherwise take too. Because if you do did that, then they might, they would have some difficulty treating it. So it has to be, has to be compatible. I took the Columbus Water Works ordinance and did a, a knife job on it, trying to, trying to cut it down and make it look belonging to Harris County. And as I sent, told you all on the twenty-sixth, that's when I sent you a copy of the ordinance, I provided to you for your review and reading pleasure. Thus, to this point, I think the only commissioner that I've heard from is, is Commissioner Chudy. And I think maybe if she just thought that that was something she was supposed to do, read all these ordinances and must have scared her away tonight. So we need to put this on the agenda probably for the next, the next meeting. But if you get a chance to, to look at it and you see any, anything in it that is obvious and needs changing, changing or questions, let me know. I dealt with Tom, Tom?
Horn.
Tom Horn from, from Columbus Water Works. I sent him the revised ordinance and he's taking a look at it. And, and as far as I know, he's, he's comfortable with it. I'll get that leave again and make sure that there are no other changes we need to make. But we need to have it in place because after the bonds are closed, which will probably be on December twenty-second, then we will be issuing a notice to proceed order to start the construction of the sewer line. And we need to have the ordinance in effect when we start that.
Tony, you mentioned that the bond validation hearing is conducted by Judge Gerben?
Yes.
Who testifies at those hearings?
Well, you know, nobody really. You advertise it and of all I've had over the years, I've never, I had one man show up one time and ask, is anybody here to, here on this particular bond issue? And he said, I am, and, you know, scared me to death while he was there. And he said, do you have objection? And he said, no, I just always seen his advertising and I thought I'd come and see what the hearing was like. So, but if you have an objection, certain citizens can come in and raise that, raise that objection.
From the, the hearings, just to make sure that all the documents are?
Are correct and there's nobody that is issuing, is issuing a, any sort of objection. Usually if, occasionally in general, I've seen where there's some, that's the people that come in and object. But what would happen if this objection is, of course, will then hope, not issue a validation order and set it down for a hearing so that we can make a determination as to whether or not their objections, if, and they're being raised are valid objections to the issue.
Commissioner Chudy, do you have any feedback?
Yeah, she had a few odds and ends and said she enjoyed reading.
Well, I did.
I didn't either. And for the record, I read both copies, both the unformatted and the other one. And I was ready to go to sleep that night.
Because she had, she had two, you know, typo, typo errors and changes. And then what we'll do is that once you adopt that ordinance, of course, we will, then we'll come back. And, and the way I've done set it up, I tried to set it up so that, you know, the, the ordinance will, while it's on the books, we will, it will only affect, because you have no other public sewers in the county and you have to have to approve them, it will only affect a designated area, which is described, we will describe with the resolution. It's property owned and being developed as Mulberry Grove. It could be that if, we talked about this at one time before, Woodland Hills has had, had some discussion with. In fact, one time there was an agreement, a river sewer in Woodland Hills and it fell through about twenty years ago. But there's been some recent discussion about getting on with Woodland Hills. This sewer ordinance would, would then also apply to that, you know. And we described the area that it was subdivision back in that subdivision. Hopefully, you know, and I don't know whether this will ever work or whatever, whatever will come to fruition. But I think there, the city of Hamilton has a sewer and, I believe, Pine Mountain does. And so, you know, it may be that if they ever give up their sewer and say, here, you know, Harris County take it, then you've already got a sewer ordinance, you know, in effect.
Don't go there.
Yeah, but you don't have a sewer treatment plant, so, and they are very, very expensive.
Alright, thanks, sir. That's information on the.
Yes, sir. And that's all I have.
Alright, well, that's it. Unless, we have any other business?
I just want to let the commission know, I don't know if everybody knew that. David Lyons, who's been working as our economic development guy at West Point, was accepted to position in Ozark, Alabama, and will be gone by the end of the week. So we'll be working with Brian, Stiletto, Salito and, what did we got?
Doomer.
Virgil.
Okay, very good. Again, thank y'all, y'all for being here tonight. This being is a jury.